Determining whether or not I need to do a third session. But if a critical mass of every committee has people who've gone through the training, you know, then I may just do it on a one-on-one basis. And I also will be putting everything online on the advisory committee webpage. So if it's a referral. Okay, so let's start. I will have to leave at about 6:30 because I'll need to swear in. The [inaudible].
And you go?
I, yeah. This has been a...
Is that mine?
That's...
That was, that was...
This one right here on the table.
From me first?
Yeah, I was gonna say, from me first. Okay. So I'm gonna move this way. So I will ask everyone is to save your questions to the end because I think many of you might be... So some of us, I'm gonna go by fairly quickly because it will be on the website and it's... What I wanted to do is include just some background information for people since all of you are gatekeepers, you know, community leaders, and so just having that information, I think, is a good thing. And I'm going to put everything on the website, should be probably next week. I wanted the opportunity that if I needed to update any slides, basically, I'm gonna be back at this and I can do so. So anyway, I included what the new city council used to call subcommittees are. And these are the committees that the voting members or two members or less than a quorum of the city council, and they have arranged themselves now in the following subject areas: budget and government, community services, public safety, public work, sustainability, and transportation. And included, I think, one of these committee dates might have changed, I would check on that. But these are who, these are the different council members that are on these bodies. And as I said, this will be part of what is on the website as a resource for advisory committee members and others of the party. So there are now seven community advisory committees, and these are the ones that there are. And so how many of you are from Bike Ped? Okay. How many of you are from budget?
All start.
Commission on Aging?
Yes, I'm here.
Economic Development? Housing? Parks and Rec? And Public Art?
Here.
We have a whole bunch of Baltimore Polygraph and Last Stop, so that's great. Those are well represented in this. Okay. And another thing that changed a bit when the council restructured the advisory committees is the meeting frequency. So these are the current meeting frequencies for the different committees. So governing bodies. And again, some of you already know this kind of stuff, so go through it and then keep up the ask questions. So the city council rules of procedures were revised as part of the city council's action to structure the advisory body...
Could you just speak just a little bit louder?
Oh, sure. Sorry. So the council rules of procedure were changed as part of enacting the changes to the community structure. And so one thing is that the city council no longer are members of any of the community advisory committees, just on the council's subcommittees. And this really is a best practice in that while I'm not saying for a minute that any of our council has done this, either by accident or by design, that there is a perception that councils being on community committees, some, either one, you really only should have one bite of the apple, so to speak, and the council's deliberations on any subject matter should be at the council level. And if they're participating in community committee discussions, then there could be, at least a perception that their positions have already been formed at a lower level as opposed to at their appropriate legislative level. The other issue too is, again, I'm not saying that any of our council, you know, has done this, but there's also the possibility of undue influence. You know, either because of a certain amount of screening that committee members might do from the community based upon, you know, an eyebrow or, you know, or, you know, the council being part of the discussion, or even the possibility of retaliation, that if I consistently bring things up that the council member who's the voting, who's also in the committee doesn't like, then perhaps, you know, I would not be reappointed. For all those reasons, I believe California Cities, you know, has said that it is best practice and so does not to have council members as members of committee advisory committees. And if they choose to attempt, then they should be, it's purely observation, you know, and not engaged in the discussion. Committee membership terms were also changed to coincide with the city's fiscal year. This is something that is all, that the planning commission has decided that for some time. And we think this does two things. One is as we get to the work plans, it, it kind of has, the work plans are gonna be aligned with the two-year budget process, which is on the fiscal year of the city. And so the terms also being in that same cycle seem to make sense. And also that it oftentimes was such that particularly when there's a change of council, you know, they're getting supported in December and that same meeting is when they're supposed to be appointing new council, you know, so it's, it gives a little bit of time to make that a, maybe a better process. Advisory committee recommendations regarding member appointments are no longer part of the process as well. Similarly, as I said, with the council not being members, when you have the ability of standing incumbents of a committee making a recommendation of the city council on who to appoint when there are vacancies in that committee, again, not to say that anyone has done this, but, you know, there could be perceptions of that, that I, of, that could sustain charges of either discrimination or, again, of, not just of geographic or ethnic, but also of opinion, you know, that if a majority is making a recommendation, there may be more of a likelihood that the person that's being recommended is in sync with the majority as opposed to being an individual or a different opinion. So again, I'm not saying that any of the committees that have made recommendations in the past have done so, but again, it's about perception and best practice is why this changed me. August was also established as a month-long summer break. And so, so, which is also the city council summer break. Obviously, if there's some hot topic that you're pursuing, you know, you can call a special meeting. But generally speaking, we're trying to keep the public meetings in office dark. And also that we are working on incorporating the 10-day noticing that we are now doing for the city council to advisory committees. It's a little bit of a work in process to get up to speed because it's very new, but that is our goal. And at least I think you'll see that you're getting the agendas earlier and we're gonna try to ramp it up so we are able to meet that 10-day noticing. The other thing that was changed were the council committee rules of procedure, which are also called the committee bylaws. Some of the highlights are that now committees are asked to do work plans and annual reports. And we'll say a little bit more about that later. I would say that this year, when we get to that, it's gonna be really a two-year work plan aligned with the budget cycle. Obviously, this year, we're already in the middle of the second year of a two-year budget. So really, this year, it's to try to kind of go through a process, kind of a learning process of how committees will develop work plans. And so when the next two-year budget cycle would start since 1617, start et cetera, you know, that will already be something that people understand and have experienced with. Same thing with the agenda, that the agendas with the new bylaws should be aligned with the work plan as well as responsive to city council or staff referrals, or based upon a committee, a committee majority wishing to place something for active discussion. But there is also the ability to keep a list of pending agenda items. So this is where individual, particularly individual committee members who have like a great idea, but it may not quite fit with the work plan, or the work plan is so full that you kind of have to think about when, you know, when can you fit it into the agenda process, that a list is maintained. And that part of what the meeting will do, committee members will do, is by majority, you know, be able to bring some of those over and schedule them for discussion. So we don't wanna lose, you know, individual ideas. You know, some of the best ideas are those that, you know, were, were some that came out of something different from the work plan maybe, but we wanna be able to really respond to some of the feedback that we've gotten that some committees and sometimes have really drifted away from their core mission and instead there's a lot of individual issues being, being proposed with no ability of the committee as a whole to be able to make sure that, well, that is not lost as an idea, that it doesn't kind of tend to kind of send the committee on, on tangents that the majority of the committee don't, doesn't that wish to go, so to speak. It also requires that committee training and orientation take place. For new members, as, I will be, so for people who have gone through training, we're gonna ask that you do it again every two years, kind of like ethics training, just to maintain that. And for new members, the orientation would really be referenced to the documents that are gonna be put on the committee webpage. But obviously, I'm available to discuss them with people if they need a little bit more, if they have questions, or if they have, if that's not the easiest way for them to learn. And something that is not new, but I think is worthy of mentioning, is that the bylaws also call for the automatic termination for three unexcused absences in 12 months. And we have had at least one committee member recently automatically terminated for that. So that's why I wanna put it out there so you're aware of that and it doesn't call. And this is not new. This has been there for quite a few years. We just have, don't usually have this come up.
Is that three unexcused absences?
Three unexcused absences in 12 months. An excused absent currently is that the member who is going to be absent has notified either the committee chair or the committee secretary. Implications happen, illness happen, we appreciate that. Family responsibility is out. So in addition to those governing bodies, the council, the community committees are also governed by the Brown Act, which is state law regulating open and transparent government, or facilitating open and transparent government. It regulates all local legislative agency meetings, including subsidiary bodies, i.e. community advisory committees, that are created by resolution or other formal action of the legislative body. And we'll get a little bit about what, what those kinds of meetings are, but it's a more deposition. It requires that such meetings are open in public. It determines minimum public notice of requirements, and it permits the public to report proceedings. So some basic guidelines is that a meeting is defined as involuntary activation of a majority of the members at the same time and location, with the exception that it is not applied to ad hoc subcommittees composed of less than a quorum that were not established by council resolution. And so if there's a couple of members that are, have a working group, you know, they don't have to notice it, that kind of thing. But if it was a majority of the, of the committee, for example, going on a field trip, which happens sometimes, you know, to look at bike lanes in Berkeley, you know, you'd still have to notice that because it is a meeting of which more than a quorum is attending. Some, and it has special rules for meetings falling under attorney-client privilege, what we call closed session, but that doesn't really affect, I don't know, maybe affects the planning permission, I'm not sure, but it certainly does not affect, and they're not part of these guidelines, of the, of the council bylaws or anything like that. But they, it really is for city council when they meet with their authority. One thing I wanted to mention is that it also includes serial meetings. And my experience has been that this is where community, where committee members inadvertently find themselves in violation of the Brown Act. And I, and it's because it's not, people think of a meeting as being, we're all in one room around one table, but that's not just what it means. A serial meeting is a series of communications. So the biggest issue that tends to happen is that dreaded copy-all with email. You know, that if you do that, so if, if, if committee member A talked to committee member B and committee, and, and, oh, if committee member A sent an email to committee member B but did a copy to all, that's now a serial meeting. If committee member A talked to committee member B, who talked to committee member C, and let them know what committee member A and B talked about, that's also a serial meeting. It's also a serial meeting if John Q. Emeryville talks to committee member A, and I, here I'm using five members as being who's on the committee, so three would be a quorum. If John Emeryville talks to committee member A, John Emeryville talks to committee member B, and mentions the conversation that he had with committee member A, and then talks to committee member C and mentions what he talked about with committee member A and B, we now have a quorum of the committee that knows, you know, the position or the thoughts or, you know, of, now a majority. That constitutes a serial meeting as well. And so just to be very careful of that, you know, when you're in coffee houses or, you know, getting your, your pastry from [inaudible], then needs to be careful about that, that you don't wanna do serial meetings inadvertently because that is a violation of the Brown Act. So I said, so it can be through direct communication, which is the, you know, the, you know, three people meeting at a neighborhood watch meeting of the Bike Ped committee, or, you know, a majority of, a quorum of the Bike Ped committee is meeting on some event and they kind of start talking about some issue that could be in front of the meeting. And I'm not trying to pick on Bike Ped, it's just the first example that came to mind, to me. That one is serial meeting. And of course, mostly it's through technological devices and people copying or forwarding emails. As I said, it's, it's the, it's the biggest violation of the Brown Act. It is almost impossible for no one to have been guilty of it sometimes inadvertently. So committee [inaudible]. I wanted to touch briefly on committee staff relationships. Committee staff have an obligation to work cooperatively with committee members and the public to consider the welfare of the entire city in their work as committee staff person, to be fair, objective, and courteous, and to ensure that due process is afforded to all who come before these advisory committees. I will say, having said that, that committee staff report to their department director slash city manager and are not committee employees. So if there are committee requests for information or staff work that will require an excessive amount of staff time outside of what that staff committee has already been assigned to do, then that will require the approval of their department head or potentially the city manager, depending on the nature of the information request. And so that would be forwarded to know how to handle that and it would be, the committee would be advised of that. Of course, committee members do always have the opportunity to go straight to the city council and ask that staff be directed to, to, to work on X, Y, and Z. So, you know, there is that opportunity. But, you know, there are sometimes in the past that staff wanting to be cooperative and facilitate committee work end up doing a lot of work that really wasn't authorized by their supervisor. And, you know, that can be a problem. And of course, committee members may not request individual reports, favors, or special considerations. That really should be asked by the majority of the, of the committee. And again, if, you know, if it's something simple, most staff people aren't gonna, you know, ask if there's a report that they know where it is, it's gonna take them a minute to get to you. That's not an issue. But if it's, oh, we are interested in building a new senior center, can you give us a feasibility study report? And the commission agent asks that, that clearly is something that would require some authorization to put that kind of staff resource into replying to that request. I didn't wanna just use Bike Ped. So Robert's Rules of Order is another governing document for committees. And really, Robert's Rules of Order is simple in terms of its guiding principles. One, which I think is something that was, I didn't realize this until I actually read it thoroughly, is that everyone has the right to participate in discussion. That I knew. But before anyone else may speak a second time. So, so that if you want to speak a second time, first, anyone who wants to speak the first time has to be allowed that opportunity. Now, if there's no one who, you know, not everyone wishes to speak on every issue, so once the chair has determined that everyone who wants to speak has spoken, then people can speak a second time. Everyone has the right to know what's going on at all times. Is this a motion that we're discussing? Is it an information item? You know, so that's another kind of guiding principle. Also that only urgent matters may interrupt a speaker. So, you know, being courteous to your fellow committee members. And urgent, and some urgent matters are specific kinds of motions. So for example, a motion to order would be if the discussion is veering way off topic. You know, you can have a motion either, you know, to, to bring that up, that this is not on the agenda, what we're discussing. You could also call a motion to limit discussion, let's suppose something that was an issue that we discussed for 45 minutes and it's clear that, you know, there's no traction being given, so to speak. You can say, we're gonna discuss this five more minutes, and then after that, we're gonna call the question and take a vote. Or that we're going to end discussion and take a vote. Or we're gonna table this motion and come back with the next meeting because it's clear we're not going anywhere, we're just stuck here. So those are all kind of motions that help facilitate the committee and addresses some of the concerns that we've heard from committee members and the public that committees, that would support committees being most impactful in terms of informing the council and advising them for decisions, as well as facilitating kind of the efficient in use of everyone's time and really honoring the time that all of you who we know are volunteers are providing to the city and being active at community committees. And only one thing can be discussed at a time. So Robert's Rules of Order 101. Again, we are, for our committees as well as the council, it's simplified rules. We, you know, the Robert's Rules of Order is a pretty thick document and we're not trying to, you know, there are people who make their living being parliamentarians for various formal bodies. We're really using Robert's Rules of Order, the simplified version. And one of the documents that I will be putting on the website is like a two-page kind of, Robert's Rules 101, like what the different basic motions are. So a motion is the topic under discussion. After being recognized by the chair, any member can introduce a motion when no other motion is on the table. So a motion could be that we are going to discuss item 4.0 of the agenda, or we're gonna get a presentation, right? So then that is like the topic under discussion. A motion requires a second to be considered. A motion must be disposed of, either passed, debated, tabled, referred to a committee, or postponed before another is considered. And a member may make a motion to call to order, which is adhering to the agenda, limiting discussing or calling the question.
Karen?
Yes?
I mean, when you say a motion is a topic under discussion, I mean, there are often, in my experience, agenda items which are discussion items but no motion expected to come from in terms of any kind of a vote or anything. Are we redefining motion to include agenda items?
What I would say is, is that, I'm sorry, I was not clear, I'm sorry. Is that in those situations, there really should be a time set on how long we wish to talk, right? And because otherwise, you know, because if it's information...
So basically, a motion or agenda item?
Yes, a motion or an agenda, sorry.
Karen?
Yes?
You were talking about substitute motions?
Yes.
Is that you covering that?
No, a substitute motion is that if there is a substitute motion, such as, let's suppose there was a motion to change that, to recommend that, that the city contract for, you know, some food vendor was changed. And someone had decided that they think that instead the food should be prepared by city staff, in-house city staff. And so that could be a substitute motion. Substitute motions have to be addressed before the original motion. And if the substitute motion fails, either because of lack of a second or because the majority votes it down, then you go back to the original motion. And a motion requires a second to be considered. So the committee chair, this is something that is also something that was requested, is to better define or better, or provide support to committee chairs in doing their, conducting their role. So each committee shall by majority of vote, appoint a chair at the first meeting of the fiscal year. So at your first meeting, you should appoint a chair. This is all the council bylaws require, that the committee bylaws require that you appoint a chair. However, there's nothing preventing a committee of also appointing a vice chair. What the bylaws say, that if the chair is not present at the meeting, then staff essentially to rarely chairs the meeting long enough. There's an emotion and a vote on who would be the acting chair for that meeting. Rather than doing that, many committees just vote for a vice chair. So you don't have to go through that exercise, you know, if the chair is not there. And that's perfectly fine. But you don't have to. The chair has the following responsibilities. One is to work with committee staff, develop a meeting agenda, and we'll get to that in a minute, to call the meeting to order, to run the meeting according to the simplified Robert's Rules of Order, to confine the discussion to what is on the agenda. So while certainly the members have the ability to bring that to the chair's attention through, you know, a, a, a motion, really, you know, the chair should be cognizant of that as well and steer the discussion back, or take it as a sign that perhaps the discussion's run its course and, you know, put some parameters around additional discussion. Also to facilitate courteous discussion and encourage all members to participate in discussion. That's where understanding Robert's Rules of Order, I think, is a big benefit to the committee chairs because in fact, and it's very clear, everyone should have a chance to talk once before anyone talks twice. I mean, knowing that that's part of how you govern a meeting, I think, you know, supports that courteous discourse and also every member getting an opportunity to weigh in to that discussion. And also at the end of the meeting, to summarize committee act, committee actions and recommendations or any fable of agenda items. Certainly helps with staff in terms of make, doing the minutes, but also I think it's a, it's a great way of kind of honoring the committee's input by summarizing what transpired, where, where the committee was with agenda items, and then doing follow-up. Because sometimes I will say a staff, it's not always clear. So we're gonna get to work. Any questions about that? So we're gonna get to the work plan. Now, again, the reason, the, the work plan that I'm going to kind of use as my example didn't come from the city of Emeryville, or I didn't use a city of Emeryville community committee as an example because I didn't want anyone to think that I was pre-setting what someone's work plan would be. So this is from the city of Albany Sustainability Committee. It is the format in general that the council approved in that it's very simple. It's really bullet points. It's not, it's not a very onerous type of work plan. And the idea of having a work plan is again to, to support the... And the idea of having a work plan is, again, to, to support the impactfulness of the committee, of the advisory committee committees on city decisions, as well as to provide some parameters around discussion so that everyone, and I'm really talking about the committee members, that their, that your contribution is honored by focusing on, on the subject matter of your committee. So, this, so the, the, the work plan would be done every two years in sync with the city budget process. And the year that the work plan, and, but every year, there is an annual report. So this is an example of a combined annual report slash work plan. If it was an off-year, you would just do this page. And so simply, the annual report is list your initiatives and accomplishments for that, for the past year, bullet points. So, again, not very onerous. And committee staff can help draft it and then bring it to the committee as opposed to, you know, something called clock is probably not the best use of your time. But it is your annual report and it's your work plan. Staff will just be bringing you a draft to, you know, to work on, so to speak, as a basis for your discussion. So, here is what is the work plan. And this is actually taken verbatim from the City of Albany Sustainability Committee. And essentially, it is that you're looking for the next two years on what is it that you want to focus on. And the way that you do that is that you look at kind of city policy documents, stated city council priorities that pertain to your committee. For some committees, it's pretty easy. You know, Bike Ped has the bike, you know, implementing the bike pedestrian plan is kind of your mission. Commission on Aging, not quite as defined, you know, kind of what the documents are. But you can look at things such as, that the, if the council, for example, is, this is something I used last time, so I know it. So, for example, the Bike Pedestrian Committee, implementing the Bike Ped Plan is their mission. But that's a whole lot of stuff, right? That's a whole lot of stuff and it will be, you know, ongoing for foreseeable future. So, what you could do is say, "Well, what are some of the council priorities that we could feed into implementing the Bike Ped Plan?" So, for example, and this is just me coming up with an example, is that the council is very interested in family-friendly design. So it could be that part of the Bike Plan, Work Plan for the next, you know, cycle is thinking about implementing family-friendly types of bicycle infrastructure. What, you know, what is that? What does it look like? You know, do our, does our bike, our current bike system align with that? And if not, what would we do to change? So that would be a way of, of kind of carving out for that committee, maybe, you know, something they want to work on. For, for example, the Commission on Aging, you know that the ECL is going to be established fairly soon. And, you know, staff will be looking at kind of what, you know, what are the kinds of activities that should be at the ECL in support of seniors? And how does that, you know, and how does that interrelate with what's happening at the senior center itself or other locations? So that could be, you know, something in your work plan that you wanted to discuss. So it really is thinking about, you know, what are either the documents? If you're the, the Park and Rec Committee, you know, again, you might, one, there, there, there may be something around sustainability. Maybe you decide that, you know, you want to focus for a year on sustainable parks, you know, and look at things like additional drought policies to recommend or something like that. So again, you know, in your sphere of authority, there are policy documents or stated city priorities that would help guide you in determining what your work plan is. As I said, it's just bullets, yes?
However, there are situations that arise in committees which I think is part of the value of committees in terms of feeding information to the staff and to the city council where things arise that the city council has not thought of.
And we'll mix that, right. And the next slide around preparing the agenda will cover that. Because, yes, it's totally assumed that there are things that come up. So this is just an example. So, in this case, the Sustainability Committee is referring to the Council Strategic Plan Objective and Advanced Climate Action Plan, and also another strategic plan objective to engage our diverse community. And that's what they chose as kind of the basis for their work plan for, for, well, for, for the next year. So here's a sample agenda that I did based upon the City of Albany Sustainability Committee or the City of Albany Sustainability. And this gives an example of how you would build an agenda. So, in this case, there are a couple of items, CC Status Report and the Arts and Green Festival, which is a work plan item. You know, that was part of the work plan that we just saw. So that's a work plan item. And so is the number four, the proposed ordinance recommendation. Also on this agenda, there's a city council referral. In this case, the county is looking at expanding the plastic bag ban ordinance and our city council member who is sitting on the staff voice board would like to get some community feedback around whether or not the city should support that ban. So this is something that's not specifically on, in the work plan to tackle. It's certainly within the scope of responsibility for this committee and it's a city council referral came up. Also, city staff might have things that they wish to get some feedback from committees. So, for example, in this case, staff is thinking about a green water ordinance, you know, on maybe requiring that new development, or requiring that, that complexes perhaps put in the infrastructure to be able to use secondary water. And before they are ready to submit a recommendation to the council, they wish to get some feedback from the committee. So again, this would be something that was not in the work plan, but it's, you know, assisting the city in decision-making. And there's future agenda items. So this is the opportunity to put things by committee majority that came up from the committee. And for those items that at that, at this time, maybe majority of the committee don't think there's room to discuss, what number, under number eight, member comments, there's a parking lot. And this is the opportunity to say, "Hey, you know, I really want to think about something. This is a really great idea. I understand right now, majority of the committee, you know, doesn't want to discuss this, but we're not gonna lose that great idea, you know, or, or lose that unique idea." And there's the opportunity for the committee to put it as a discussion item or an action item in the future. So we certainly do not, so the purpose of the agenda is to make sure that while we capture all ideas and that the committee is, is certainly not limited in terms of what's under their scope of authority, but it just makes it a little bit more of a deliberative, deliberate process of how you build an agenda and making sure that much of what the committee is focused on are things that are really going to be action items, which to me is using your, your commitment and your volunteerism respectfully, yes?
Karen, maybe I missed a step. So, your number seven, future agenda items, that would be the chair would then say, say, "This is our parking lot." Does anyone want to make a motion to move any of this to-
Right.
-our next agenda?
Right.
And then-
Right.
Exactly.
Right. Or, that's your opportunity. And, you know, there are going to be times where you may have a fairly light agenda and so there's just more room, you know, to discuss these things that are not, you know, kind of on your work plan. So this, you know, you want to make sure that those great ideas are those interesting-
And something being brought to the agenda on that night, based on that, that comment you just made about sometimes you have a light night, because it's not then that ten-day advance-
If it's not on the agenda, it really can't be discussed.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Right, if you bring it up, it's really, you know, asking the committee, you know, "Do I have this?" It's kind of like the council, right? That there are times in which the council member has an item they wish to be discussed, but it's not an item that is kind of part of the regular agenda process.
And if you take action on it, it's-
Right, but they want, so they ask the council, for a majority of the council to agree that essentially it can be put on a future agenda. So that, it's a similar process to what the council does for those individual council members that have an issue that they wish to put on an agenda in the future, yeah?
Isn't the rule that you can't make any decision? It's not that you can't discuss it, it's just that you can't make any decision.
If it's not on the agenda, it really should not be discussed because there are people who might wish to weigh in who, not seeing it on the agenda, don't show up. And so, you know, that's really, part of notification is that you're letting people know, you know, you're giving the opportunity to participate. And if they don't know, if it's not on the agenda, they don't know that it's something that they can discuss, yes?
It's actually a violation of the Brown Act.
Yeah, I was just saying-
It's a court of people discussing an item not on the-
Right, exactly. So you can't do it. Okay. So, yes?
Just so I understand, when I was on the Economic Development Committee, what would happen, sometimes when somebody would have a good idea and go, "Oh, next week is my, is the committee meeting. This idea, they'd send an email out. How about talking about, you know, effective, you know, putting planners out in front of you? And people go, "Oh, here's an article about it." But that's-
A violation of the Brown Act.
Yeah.
Okay. As I said, mostly the violations are inadvertent. You know, people with good intentions, try to do good work, who inadvertently are, are doing things that are not-
Yeah, they're violating-
They're not really open to-
Communicating on an issue and trying to put something on the agenda.
And really, and so that's not part of open and transparent government if people are, if the majority of a committee are holding discussions in which that discussion has not been noticed, you know, the public has not had the ability to attend, et cetera.
Couldn't you decide to consider it as an emergency item, situation where something comes up?
The council has the ability to do that. You know, the, the, the council has the ability to do that. You know, I will have to ask the city attorney of advisory committees to do that. But I would say that you're, given that you, I mean, the noticing requirement is seventy-two hours, even though we're, you know, going towards the ten-day, actually it's eleven-day. So I think there are very few things that a committee advisory committee wouldn't know that could at least result in revised agenda seventy-two hours before the meeting. I mean, I don't think there's that to, that, that happens. And quite honestly, for council, one thing that the city attorney constantly has to remind the council is just because it's something you want to do, doesn't necessarily, that wasn't a agenda, doesn't necessarily make it the threshold of an agenda issue that can be put on the agenda on an emergency basis. It has to be truly an emergency. You know, a grant applicant, or, you know, unforeseen, a grant application you didn't know about and it requires a council resolution that night. Or earthquake happened and we need, you know, a resolution declaring emergency. Or the city, the city, the civic center roof collapsed and, you know, we need to have a- you know, so there's, there's some things that really can't wait. Mostly it's things that people just don't want to wait.
Yeah, that's true.
So that really ends it, so I can take questions now. As I said, that I will be putting on the website these slides, updated local roster of boards, commissions, and committees, which you know who's on your own committee, but again, you are a community resource. So you will know all the people that are in all the committees just for your information and if your neighbors ask. I'm gonna give you a full copy of the Brown Act because that often comes up and as it was effective January first, two thousand and fifteen, and also a copy of a simplified version, a two-page cheat sheet of Robert's Rules of Order.
That would be good.
Two pages?
It's two pages. And it's not like two pages of narrative, it's two pages of-
Points.
Of points. You know, it defines what a motion is, it defines, you know, when you can do a substitute, what happens if you do a substitute motion, that kind of just cheat sheet. As I said, it's simplified rules. So any questions? Yes, and then I'll, oh, you already asked one, so in the spirit of Brown Act, I'll ask the person who's in talk.
I have a few questions, but I'll just ask, one of the, okay, two, I'll just ask two things. Hopefully I can squeeze in two questions. One is letting somebody know about a late, you know, like if something comes up at the late last minute, I have to stay at work, whatever. Is there a number we can call, like, can you let us know, here's who you contact? Because that has been an issue before, if something comes up at the last minute, staff may be in transit getting here.
Well, if you've notified, if you sent an email to that committee staff person saying, "I can't make it after all," you notify them.
Even if they don't get it before the meeting starts?
Yes, yes, because, you know, we're not giving you our private cell phone numbers that, you know, you can call us at any time, right?
Two in the morning?
It's two in the morning, right? So, so, yeah, so the fact that you left a phone message saying it or sent an email saying it, you fulfilled your obligation. You fulfilled your obligation.
Okay, and then, then my other question was that I noticed that the schedules for, you know, are monthly, quarterly, bimonthly for different committees. The B-PAC, which is the committee I'm on, the Bike Ped Committee, has, has wanted to meet monthly and had resisted in the past a request that we change our meetings to bimonthly. And we would still like, I, I won't speak for the whole committee, but we discussed wanting to meet monthly rather than bimonthly and we were told to ask here about what-
Well, there's certainly, when the committee, when the council made these changes, you know, there certainly were some committees who wanted to be more frequently. I don't, and, and decided to establish the schedule that you see. Now, obviously, if there is a work plan submitted that clearly, you know, a monthly meeting is not going to be sufficient, there's the possibility of requesting that the meeting frequency, either for regular meetings be changed, or you could also do special meetings. So, there might be some committees that when it's right about budget time, might meet, you know, a little bit more frequently just in order to be able to truly have, to participate in the budget cycle. So you can do special meetings for kind of, you know, the varying workloads that committees might have. If you feel that it's not a matter of a special meeting here and now, but, you know, you just consistently need a monthly meeting, then that would have to be done by amending the roster of committees and the council has to do that. Now, staff would be recommending that the council wait a year before making those changes, you know, to see it in practice as opposed to, "We think we need more, but that we demonstrated that we need more." And I, you know, can't imagine that that wouldn't be honored given, you know, if you need more time to do the work that you're doing and it's productive work, you need to meet more frequently. But the feedback that we've gotten from many committees that, well, there might be some folks that think we need, that, that want the committee to meet more frequently. There are others who aren't convinced that that's actually necessary. And so we're hoping that, you know, the work plan and all that will, you know, help to determine that, in fact, this is a committee that has so much work and, you know, so much productive feedback to be made that, you know, the quarter of the schedule just isn't doing it, for example, yeah?
On our committee, I'd noticed that, from what I understand, is that when we bring up a motion or a discussion item, what's supposed to happen is that there's members of the public that are sitting around the table, they're supposed to be able to comment and then we're supposed to deal with it. And a lot of times, we just have people running in and rejecting and stuff like that. And no one, I guess, the chair, has stopped them. And so it's, is that the procedure we're supposed to be using? Is a, beginning of a, something about, you know, that's going to be discussed, members of the public first, or actually, if it's a presentation, it's a presentation, members of the public and then we, right?
Yes. You don't want to prescribe everything that committees do, you know, and some committees have more back and forth- have more back and forth than others. But the reason that I wanted to say something about the role of the committee chair, that really then is the chair to facilitate that, you know? And so to, so for example, no one should speak unless they've been recognized by the chair. And if that's happening either by committee members or the general public, it's the chair that should be, you know, addressing that with the committee staff possibly riding shotgun, so to speak. You know, so, you know, to support the chair in corralling that, you know, so it is orderly because it is disrespectful and also it's, you know, it's disrespectful not to have the discussion in orderly fashion. And again, and part of that is if, you know, if everyone who wanted to speak spoke, okay, now you can speak for a second time. So that's all something that the chair should be doing and the committee secretary should be supporting the chair in doing that. Yeah. Yes?
When the committee's being given a presentation or some other situation where something's being discussed, sometimes it kind of comes up that, an issue that we'd like to discuss in the future and we discuss whether we want to discuss it and then we vote on whether to add it to the future agenda? That's, that's okay, right?
That's supposed, I think that's supposed to be at the end of the meeting.
Well, okay, so there's this G piece. One is, is there input from the committee on what we're going to put on the next agenda? Right? Because while that's the committee chair and the staff person kind of doing the final agenda, you know, the committee member should have, you know, is giving them the opportunity to have some input on what's on the next agenda. So that's, that's why that's there. The second piece, which is under really more member comments, is the idea that's not part of the work plan, is not something that at this point, a majority of the committee has said we want to put on the agenda, but we want to, in, when you facilitate a meeting, it's called the parking lot. And so these are meetings that aren't necessarily on topic right now, but we don't want to lose them as ideas and we don't want to lose them as potential future agenda items. And so staff will be keeping a list of those and, you know, that's an opportunity when you're discussing what's on a future agenda, that the committee can say, oh, you know, let's discuss X now because there's time or because something has happened, you know, that now makes it more relative or, you know, there are committee members after thinking about it individually decide that they really want to discuss it and it's not just coming from one person, it's coming from a majority of the, of the committee. Similarly, the council also, there are instances in which a council member wants to bring forth some item that would take some staff work. And it's not an item that the city manager feels that for whatever reason, they could just include as part of staff's work, but the council member has the ability to put on the agenda directing staff to, you know, work on this issue. So again, it's not lost, but you can imagine if, if, if every idea that an individual had was added to an agenda, you wouldn't make progress on kind of the things that a majority of the committee has already agreed to and is consistent with, you know, what you're trying to accomplish in terms of having meaningful input.
Right. So how does, so what, so how does it get, deciding what goes onto that list, that parking lot list or whatever?
Any...
No, I mean, I mean, how do we decide, how does the committee contribute to decide determining what goes in there?
That majority of the council says we now want to bring it from the parking lot to an agenda item.
So we would vote to say we want to add it?
Yeah, and you, and kind of you should look at your agenda calendar to see, you know, when can we fit this in? Because if you have a work plan that you're not accomplishing because you're taking up the time doing other things, you know, even if you may not need to rethink how you're developing your work plan because it's not, you know, aligning with what the committee feels is critical, you know, or you're not accomplishing it because you're spending a lot of time, you know, you're not going to... I need to run in, swear in. I will, I can, if there are people who really want to ask questions, but it's only going to take me a minute to see if people want to take one or two quick questions.
Maybe a quick, you have on the slide, the chair develops meetings with the staff. When they do that, are you saying that they're strictly limited, which are the items that the whole committee voted to put on the agenda?
No, it's also a thing that would be consistent with the, you know, it would be, include those city council referrals, if there are any. It would include staff referrals, I want feedback on the new curbside recycling program.
Does it always come up and it'll be months before we can ever get to it?
And it also includes things that a majority of the committee took off of the parking lot to put on the agenda.
Right. But I'm thinking of, it's late July now, Parks and Recreation had its meeting for this month. If I go to a park today and see an issue that I think we should discuss, it's September before we meet again, when I would then ask them, please vote to put this on our next agenda in November.
But in that case, you can also just call the committee secretary. It's, you know, I mean, there are some, you know, I mean, there are some things that are consistent with, it's not, the parking lot are really for those issues that are the grand idea, you know, or the, I just thought about something that's wonderful, but it's, I almost say, I hate to use the term left field, but you know, it's not, it's something where...
Off the work.
Yes, off the work. But if it's something like, I noticed that this park was really...
Needs some maintenance.
Needs some, I mean, that's part of, you know, that's not, that doesn't rise to that level.
But what about, I, I'll go along up on that and I have to go. What about the person who repeatedly says, the park, you know, the street in front of my house is in bad repair, when, you know what I mean? And then it comes up every month and then could, if they call the staff member and say, I want this discussed, the staff member still has discretion?
Well, ultimately, at least the way our process is, the city manager approves the final agenda. So if it's something that in...
Sounds like the staff and chair have discretion separately in the...
Yeah, there is, right. But obviously, if it's some item that is, would take a whole lot of staff time, you know, then that would be something that they would, you know, that the staff person would say, you know, let me talk to the city manager to see, because this is going to require, you know, a staff report or, you know, and analysis or something.
Yeah, okay.
You know, but it's, you know, in most cases, if it's something like, you know, something happened at the marina.
Right, yeah. Yeah, there's, the most cases, and then there are always a million, you know, babies.
Right, and you know, and this is, as I say, is a work in progress.
Yeah.
You know, the idea is just to put a little bit more structure.
Okay.
Because there's been a lot of feedback that for some committees, that's not been there.
Karen?